Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Harper, we appreciate the beautiful prayer and invocation. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting. This is a city council meeting of agenda items where items will -- official action will be taken on the items that were discussed last Thursday at the Legislative Work Session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol items for tonight's meeting and how it'll be conducted, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the Chair if you deviate from that requirement. A second deviation will result in us asking you to leave the premises. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, cheer, carry on conversations, clap, or be disruptive in any manner while you're at the podium. We ask that you please address all of your comments and concerns to myself or council members or the Chairperson, whomever is leading that particular committee. We're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings, and if you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask that you please put those in silent mode so they will not be disruptive. I'll go over protocol for the agenda items, and then we'll get into what we're here for this evening to vote on items for the agenda. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or applicant will make his or her presentation. After that, myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make our determination whether we vote yes, no, or table the item. After that, from the discussion of Thursday night, we ask if you have new information based on what's presented that you will come forward and talk to us. But tonight, it's just really for new information for the consideration of those particular items before we vote. Prior to approaching the podium, we ask that you would please fill out a speaker card, and give that speaker card to -- you can lay it on the desk, and we'll get it to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker. On the card, it will ask for your name and address, and when you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the official record. This is not a question-and-answer format. We're not here to debate. If we have the information, we can respond. Other than that, we'll take the information, give it to staff, and they will give you that response later. If you have printed materials, please give that to our city clerk. I know that's a lot of instructions and information. Hopefully, we're all on the same page. There are printed agendas outside. They look like this. You can pick those up, and/or you can follow us on the screen. So now, we will move on. As the agenda is printed, we are at approval of the agenda, and that's item number five. So I will open the floor for a motion for adoption of the regular meeting agenda for tonight, which is July 21st, 2025. Open the floor for a motion for someone to approve item 25-246.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Watts. It's been moved in second, moved by Councilmember Estes and second Councilmember Watts to approve item 25-246. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-246 is unanimously approved. We are at item number seven, which is minutes of the July 3rd, 2025 Legislative Work Session, and minutes of July 7th, 2025 Regular Meeting and Executive Session. I will open the floor for a motion to approve item 25-247.
So moved.
I had duly first.
Second.
Okay. The coach, Councilwoman Watts, made a motion to approve the minutes. Councilwoman Estes -- they switched places -- to approve item 25-247. Do we have any concerns, questions, comments, corrections, deletions to the minutes from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving item 25-247, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-247 is unanimously approved. We are at the consent agenda. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. This is items A, B, C. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Estes and second Councilmember Davis to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we see any concerns, elected officials, for the consent agenda? I don't hear any concerns or problems. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Now, we'll move quite speedily through various committees until we have business, which is coming to Planning and Development Committee, starting with item eight, Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee, Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in finance.
Thank you, sir. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no business for the Housing and Community Affairs Committee this evening.
Thank you, sir. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Tara Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee as well.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Voluing back to you, Councilmember Howard Estes, for Personnel and Organization Committee.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. The Personnel and Organization Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We do have business under item 13, which is Planning and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. We do have a couple of items this evening. The first is item number 25-264, and that is a motion to remove from the table item 25-217.
So moved. I don't know. Did I jump the gun there?
Okay.
So Councilmember, the Chair made the motion to approve 25 -- to remove 25-217 from the table. Councilmember Watts seconded that motion. Do we have any concerns or comments in reference to removing this item from the table? If not, all those in favor of removing item 25-264 from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item 25-264 is removed from the table. Now, we're at item B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
The next item is item number 25-217, tabled from June 2nd. Says to consider request for change in zoning from R8 Residential Agriculture County and R2 Single Family Residential Detached District City to PUD Plan Unit Development District City for 21.24 acres located on Malone Road and Land Lot 646, District 18, Section 2, parcel IDs 0001, 0002, 0003, and Land Lot 647, District 18, Section 2, parcel IDs 0001, 0002, and Land Lot 703, District 1, Section 3, parcel ID 0006, application by the Malphorus Group in care of Mesa Malphorus. And Mr. Dana Gray is here to go over this with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Dana Gray, 6695 Church Street. This is a proposal for rezoning to rezone R2, which is in the city, of two parcels, and R-A Residential Agriculture, which is in the county consisting of four parcels, to PUD for 169 units, 154 of those being townhomes, and 15 triplexes. They have added a 25-foot buffer around the periphery of the site. If approved, staff is recommending one condition, that the landscape plan for the 25-foot buffer for the periphery of the site shall be approved by the city engineer and community development director.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. So were there any changes from last week to this week with this presentation?
No.
No. Okay. Before we call the applicant up here, council, Madam Mayor, do you all have questions of Mr. Gray? Dr. Verdanley?
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman. I just wanted to say I appreciate the residents still being here, and one thing I can say about our mayor and council is that although we agree to disagree, we can always still be civil. I have spoken with Madam Chair, and I did leave -- I had to leave early last week, but if there's one resident who wants to hear from the developers, then I support that. It doesn't mean that I support the project, but I support our residents. So thank you, Madam Chair. And I wasn't planning to be here tonight due to some health issues, but as a ward council member, I just had a burst of energy. So I just told my husband, get the walker and push me on up there. He didn't want to. So I just want to let you know, Madam Chair, that those are my comments, and we can agree to disagree, but like I said, if there's one resident that wants to be heard, then that resident deserves to be heard. So is the developer here tonight?
Thank you. I really appreciate that, and I think we all appreciate you being here tonight. That means a lot, and I'm quite certain it does to your residents and your ward as well. Thank you.
So is the developer here tonight?
Well, first, let's make sure that no one else has questions of Mr. Gray.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, did anyone -- Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I didn't see your hand up earlier.
That's okay. It's good to see you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Praying for your strength.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Gray, you did say something about a buffer. That was additional to what was talked about last week. Is that correct?
That was spoken about last week.
Okay. So in addition to that, all of the concerns, or some of the concerns, and most especially from Madam Chair of this committee about facades and one park, one bay parking and all that is going to be addressed by the developer, so that is not anything that was presented to you to present to us?
No.
Okay. All right. So we'll wait for the applicant. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Absolutely. Thank you. And if the developer would like to come on down? To your right. There you go.
Good evening, Darren Ray.
Good evening. Hey, Mr. Gray.
6554 Church Street, Douglasville. So, sorry I was not here on Thursday to enjoy that meeting. I was in Texas visiting with my three grandsons, so it was rejuvenating, so I feel like I can come back and get this done. But anyway, I've talked with our client, you know, earlier today about the Thursday meeting and everything, and we've talked with other people on staff, with the city and in the county, and so we're requesting to table this agenda item, this one and the next one. We can come do this again if we want to, but to go ahead and table that so that we can, you know, take the time to, you know, I think we've heard the council's concerns from Thursday and the communities, so that we can maybe go back and take those concerns and wishes into consideration and see if we can't come up with a solution that everybody can, you know, maybe disagree or agree to disagree on, and maybe come up with something that we can actually build out here, that we can have a project that's good for everybody.
I'm actually very glad to hear you say that. I was going to pull up my calendar right quick and see. The next round of meetings would put us at July 31st and August 4th.
We will not have time to re-advertise by then. We have to advertise at least 15 days ahead of the meeting for the public hearing. So that would be August 14th and 18th.
And if you're okay, I would like to kind of make sure that you have all of the notes since you weren't here from us last week.
Okay.
Or just some of the things that I think that we might need to focus on for that development.
Okay.
I know one of the residents mentioned that she was not aware of the community meeting that happened herself and many others. I'm not sure how it was advertised, but I would love to see some more community involvement between now and then. Also, when we looked at this development, there's five images at the top of this presentation, and they're all vastly different in the facade. Some of them look much more appealing than others, but they do look completely different from the ones that we saw in the round of meetings from June 2nd. And one of the biggest differences that I noticed is that these are single-car garages. And for me, that's going to be a hard no. Anytime I feel like when we have developments come in that have any kind of density, these single-car garages, you end up with cars all on the streets, not only is it a safety hazard, but it's just not a good way of living. Then you have kids on bicycles, and I think we all know where that could end up going. So for me, it would be the garages. I would like to see a more clear outline of what the facade is like as far as these outsides, because, and I'm sure you've seen the presentation, they just all look very different, so I'm not sure which direction you guys are going in, but I'd like to see that detailed a little bit more. I think that we were able to get some clarification and answers as to how the security gates would work. Those were my biggest ones. Council, do you guys have thoughts and consideration that you would like the developers to take in to account when they're looking at these plans? Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. And I'm not sure, Mr. Gray, if you have everything, and we don't want to go over every issue. There was plenty that were raised, and I'm sure you said that you're going to take into consideration all those things that were said by the community and the council. But my main one that I wanted to ask, and I'm not sure if it was addressed at all, was just why the development, since the majority of the development is in the county, and there is a PUD or mixed use or something for the county, why didn't you just do the development in the county and not annex into, ask for annexation into the city? I know it's under litigation. We can't really talk about it, but just procedurally, what would be?
Was it landlocked? I think part of it was landlocked.
I think then they would have had to de-annex a portion of it that's in the city into the county. I think they were just trying to have symmetry, and so the whole development is getting the same services, because that, because if you have part of it in the city and part of it in the county, then part of the residents are being served by the Sheriff's Department, the other by the city police. Part of them are going to be getting city trash pickup that others are not, and it's a lot of inconsistencies, I feel like, and not a great way to serve the community.
That's true. Now, that's how my sub, when I lived in New Horizons in Stone Creek, part of my sub was in the city, other part, the back half, was in the county.
Right.
But it was years of development. So just based on your product, you couldn't fit everything in the county?
Well, so there's just under 22 acres total, and I think maybe, I'm going to say, nine or so of that is already in the city.
Okay.
And another 13 or so of it, I think, is in the county.
Yes, sir.
And I think, you know, I wasn't really ready for this question, but I think there's five different tracts there, so there's five different existing owners, right?
Uh-huh.
So when we started, when the Malphasists came to, you know, and asked us to help them through this process, you know, we went through and looked at, you know, you can do this in the county, you can do this in the city, here's your opportunities in the county, here's your opportunities in the city. And we kind of sat down and weighed a lot of those things out, and with some of the existing staff that was, that's no longer here now.
Yes, sir.
In the city, and it just made more sense for us to come into the city, especially with this island that we were creating or is really right there now. You've got the city wrapping around a part of the county.
Okay.
And when you get down to the services and everything, you really needed to be in one or the other and not have a split in your development as well.
Yes, sir.
And it just, at that time, when we started moving forward and got ready to submit for the annexation, it was like, okay, let's go this direction and come into the city. We felt like there was more favor there than in the county on a lot of different aspects.
Okay. Well, we're definitely feel honored that you would want to come into the city, but that was just an initial question. Since there were, out of the 22 acres, only nine was in the city, so trying to get an understanding if you had the majority of the land in the county, if the development could fit in the county, but if not, trying to get cohesiveness and everything was annexed into the city.
And I think one of the exhibits that we had given, that we turned in with our application.
Yes, sir.
Kind of shows how the existing city property wraps around.
Around the area.
And creates an island of the county there. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's the better move. I don't know that there's a development advantage on either side.
Yes, sir.
Of that. I think that it makes more sense to me as a planner that it would be in the city, and you wouldn't have this created, this peninsula up into the city there.
Yes, sir. And then the last thing for safety, and I'm not sure if this was in the notes or not, but the fire chief was here, Dr. Allen, and so we did talk about that gate at Hunter's Ridge, and he just acknowledged that they would come through the front. I mean, that was.
Right.
Yeah, so you would have a fire truck, ambulatory services, even police, one way in and one way out. I know there's an emergency going through Hunter's Ridge with the citizens and the investors, people who've already invested in their homes in that community, really didn't want another interest coming in the back of their community, and it's already kind of dense, but the fire department said they would just opt to come right through the front and not.
Right, right.
So that one way in and one way out is problemsome.
Right. You need, we needed to have an extra entrance in and out, even if it's just for emergencies.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we can probably debate this. Terry might can help us out a little bit, too. We can debate, you know, is it really better to tie it all the way through, or is it better just to have these dead-end subdivisions?
Yes.
But it's just, it's a different philosophy, different people on different things, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, we just felt like that the community was not going to want a second entrance back there on this, and, but we need it for emergency situations.
Okay.
So, you know, whoever put all of this property together to begin with, you know, they made sure that that access was to that cul-de-sac there, that touched that right away, and it, you know, it just makes it where there's that opportunity to have that second entrance, even if it is gated all the time.
Uh-huh.
Except for emergency vehicles.
Yes, and they have mechanisms where they can open the gate and get in.
That's correct.
To the fire chief's head. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. I appreciate you responding. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Verdanley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, and I'm sorry you missed part of the meeting. I did, too, most of it. I just wanted to encourage you to, I know you've met with some of the residents at Hunter's Ridge, but there is a New Horizons community group. I'd ask our city manager to communicate with the developer about the Chair. It's, her name is Marilyn Clark. They meet the fourth Monday of each month, so I see that during the time that we're tabling, they may have a meeting. So they've had special call meetings before, so although it's Hunter's Ridge, it still affects the New Horizons community, and I state that because we've had developers that have come before New Horizons, and they've said they're going to do all of this, and then when the development happens, things do not go the way they are. So I would suggest that maybe just having one meeting with, you know, so just for the sake of time, a meeting with residents, Ms. Hampton, would staff be here to support that, or is it just residents and the developer?
The onus would be on you. We can get you the contact information for you to set that meeting up to attend.
Right. So I just want to make.
You said the fourth Monday?
Yeah, so, yes, but if it's, if there's going to be a meeting that's going to kind of put us in a box where they may have a meeting and you don't have an opportunity to meet, or she may can call a special call meeting, that's, but I don't make that decision. Just like Councilman Davis and I, we're just supporters, but it is a community-driven committee advisory. So I would suggest that you definitely do that. At this point, I am still in opposition. I stand still strong on how I support it, but like I said before, if the residents want to hear it, then they deserve to hear it. I want to recognize our District 1 Commissioner, who is here, Commissioner Henry Mitchell, who represents this district in the county. So I would suggest, too, he initially started the, I can't think of the name, but the Northside Initiative, which is now the New Horizon Community Advisory Board. So just have people come and talk. The reason why I ask if staff are going to be involved, Ms. Hampton, is that to the developer, I just wanted to let you know that putting parameters in place, making sure that people, I can't control the residents speaking and all that, so I just wanted to make sure that we have everything in place, that people are safe, that people can talk. I know staff may not be here, but I mean, there was a meeting, I wasn't in attendance, but it got so heated to someone had to be escorted out. So when you're not in this presence, and you just have residents and you have a developer, I would hate to put you in a position where you're thrown to the wolves. I'm just being honest. So I'm just being fair. So if we can think about how we're going to coordinate that, you may have to be creative and meet with small groups. I don't know.
Wrong.
That's on you. I'm just trying to throw things out, but that's what I would suggest doing.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that feedback.
Yes, sir.
Was there anyone else who had anything for Mr. Gray? Mayor Pro Tem, is that, I'm sorry, I thought you were playing with your pen.
No. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ray, I suspect you could probably sit here in this seat and give my speech for me.
Yes, yes.
But just to reiterate, you know the roll call. I mean, I would say, look at two possible entrances off, on, from Malone Road rather than one. Ditch the cul-de-sacs. To Madam Chair's point about the facades and the, and the one-car garages and the access and the street parking that you know is going to happen, consider alleyways to relieve some of that, because I think that would take, that would take a lot of that burden off of having, you could still then have one-car garages in the front if you have parking space in the back. That would take care of that. Don't look at the superficial things. I mean, yeah, you can, but don't, you know, put a priority on the things that actually matter in a development like this, in the planning. As I told your boss, the, you know, think, I know what you're capable of doing. I know what HRC is capable of doing. You guys are good, you're really good planners. I know you could make this into a good development that actually would satisfy the residents of the neighborhood and satisfy the developer. Push as hard as you can, okay? Make it a, make it a good development. Don't make it one that's just there to make somebody money.
Right.
That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Coach, did you say you had something to add?
And, Mr. Gray, my time on council, I've seen the community against developments before, and the ones that end up doing well are the ones that meet with the community. And y'all have met with a few folks, but we've had, as was pointed out, several people said they didn't know where it was. And to Councilwoman Verdanley's point, you know, I don't know how you organize it, but the more you talk with them, the more you hear from them what their fears are, what they're worried about, because there's a lot of unknowns. So just getting together with them and working through some things, you just never know how that's going to turn out. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Ms. Ray, did you have anything else for us?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, then, with that being said, I make a motion then that we table item number 25-217 to the meetings of August 14th and August 18th.
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been recommendation to have a motion to move to table item 25-217 from the Chair and second by Mayor Pro Tem to table this meeting, this agenda item, to the meetings of August 14th and 18th, 2025. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or concerns from council members? Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of tabling item 25-217 to the meetings of August 14th and 18th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-217 is tabled to the meetings of August 14th and 18th, 2025.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next item is item number 25-266, and with that, I make a motion that we remove from the table item number 25-235.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I have a motion to remove this item from the table. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Coach. It's been properly moved and seconded by Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Miller, It's been properly moved, and second moved by Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Miller, in, and second by Councilmember Watts, to remove item 25-235 from the table, which is item 25-266. All those in favor of removing this item from the table, please say, oh, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Thank you, all those in favor of removing this item from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-266 is removed from the table.
Thank you. And then our last item, focuses item number 25-235, tabled from June 2nd, says to consider a request, or, I'm so sorry, consider a petition to annex 13.69 acres at the northeast intersection of Malone Road and Lycra Street, in Land Lot 646, District 18, Section 2, parcel IDs 0001, 0002, and 0003, in Land Lot 703, District 1, Section 3, parcel ID 0006, application by the Malfris Group in care of Mason Malfris, and Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening again, this is a proposal to annex four parcels, which are in Douglas County, to the city located on Malone Road.
Thank you, and did you have anything to add to that from last week?
No.
No? Counsel, did you guys have any questions on this one of Mr. Gray? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, did you have anything to add to this?
Just like to table.
Okay.
I think that.
No, I'm okay with moving forward with that. Did you guys have anything else of Mr. Ray at this time? Madam Mayor, you did?
Just a comment, not a question, this is, so they were siblings but not twins, so I took the one out of, out of sequence, so I just talked about the annexation, but this is the annexation portion, not the last item. So the same question, and you already answered the question about proximity of the island or space to do the development in, the 22 acres, and, and that's why you were asking for the annexation, petition for annexation. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying. Okay. If there's no more questions or comments on this item, then I make a motion that we table item number 25-235 to the meetings of August 14th and August 18th.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, I have a motion to table this item, may I have a second, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Coach, it's been properly moved, and second moved by the Chair, Councilmember Miller, and second by Councilmember Estes, to table item 25-235 to the meetings of August 14th and 18th, 2025. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council? Nope. All right, not hearing any all in favor of tabling this item to the meetings of the 14th and 18th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that is all that we have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much. Public Improvement Beautification Committee, that's also chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Yes, ma'am, we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you so much. We'll move on then to Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Well, I just had, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Councilman Davis.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, there was a committee meeting today at 5:00, and Councilman Davis, I just wanted to say, thank you so much for being here to speak about it, I want, I just want to commend our city manager, she and I have spoken about this event along with Mr. Bass, it's the grocery bag, and I want to say, Ms. Hampton did exactly what she stated. We talked about having discussion on this date, but my health come first, so there was a appointment that I couldn't miss, but I just wanted to say, if there's anything that had been misunderstood, it's not, I think, some of the discussion that was given, Councilman Davis, he have things that he do in this ward, that he and I, it's like, we can't be at the same place at the same time.
Right.
Like if you have, like, the best DJ in the house, then Councilman Davis is it, so he does, had done a great job with Wendy Windown, so unfortunately, Mr. Councilman Davis has not been in attendance, and not one advisory meeting that we've had every Wednesday. So I just wanted to say that it's, I have invited our champion for, every one of you received an email, and I have just spoken with our, some of our council members, and I just want to say, my colleague to the left, our champion for change is Councilmember Nicole Miller, like she and I talked about her being here and helping give out groceries, so I just wanted to say, Ms. Hampton, thank you for discussing it, she did exactly what we, what we said. So I just want to say that I think there was some information that was not presented, maybe just education-wise, but like, to cancel this event to feed children, I don't think that's appropriate, like, it's, it's hosted by Councilwoman Danley. So if you have any information, but I, please say that although the city is not, you're providing space, we provided space for, that our First Presbyterian Church came over here to support New Horizons Ward, and it was unfortunate it rained, so I just want to say, please reach out to me, but we have already, and I hear I said, I don't want to put it on social media, because we're only doing a certain amount until supplies last, so I just want to say, our champions for change, and the rest of you that I've spoken to, Coach Watts, he said, you know, I'll be glad to volunteer, so please, we just added Pastor King Golden, they're a very pivotal church in this community, to be the entity to collect funds, as elected official, I don't want my hands touching anybody else's money. So we use that because the city doesn't have the infrastructure to be able to do that, we used to do it back in the day.
Right.
And I'm going to yield my comments, because I have spoken with the Page family, I'm shifting, and I'm going to have to excuse myself, because I've signed what I needed to, my vice chair, please read the, the information I gave, and thank you, Councilman Davis, reach out to me, and then in the future, check your email and respond, I texted you a long time ago about it, but I love you, it's all good.
And we, Madam Mayor, I'd like to bring it up in other business, so you can hear all your colleagues.
Yeah, but I don't have, yeah, for other business, I have to, so you all, please excuse myself for excusing myself, but I'm getting kudos from, so I'm saying it's time to GO, so I'm, thank you, and I have to excuse myself.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, count to Dr. Burdanley, so you're not, you don't want to hear of the comments?
You need to hear the comments from, from your colleagues.
Yeah, so it's not, it wasn't in a voting, it was not- In a voting meeting?
Right.
So, um-
We can bring it up under, under other business to talk about.
Yeah, so can you please respond to the, can you please have other business respond to me? I just want you to, I mean, if y'all, if you could excuse me for a few minutes, and y'all go ahead, and I'll come back on the other business, is that fair?
That's fair, yes, ma'am, so, because we don't want you to think we didn't, the main issue was that you weren't here, and we didn't want to move forward with it.
All right, so-
So when you come back, we'll have a conversation.
Okay, so I just want to say, if it has to be a vote, that was that determined it has to be a vote, because it's not a city event, it's hosted by Councilwoman Danley, I'm an elected official.
We didn't vote.
Right, so, all right, so, I don't know how much time y'all going to be in discussion, but if I have, I'm going to excuse myself, y'all-
Yes, ma'am.
And I just did it on his committee, and I will come back, and then if we can just be diligent of time-
Yes, ma'am.
And go from there, thank you.
Definitely, and it was under-
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
-public relations.
All right, thank you.
So that's why I know you brought it up under public relations.
Sure, and thank you, Councilman Davis, yes, I, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Davis, you have any business that's on the agenda from public relations?
No, I'd just like to bring this up in other business when we get-
Yes, sir. No problem, we will certainly, we'll certainly do that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Public Safety Committee, there isn't any business from, under Dr. LaShawn Burdanley. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, Councilmember Chris Watts.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee, Chairwoman Elena Hudson, Councilmember Hudson?
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. And we'll do the Vice Chair for Transportation Committee, which is Mayor Protem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do have a single item under the Transportation Committee, and it is to adopt a resolution to rename Elm Street in the city of Douglasville to become Page Street in honor of Mrs. Martha Page.
All righty.
Okay. Ms. Hampton, I think you have some additional fill on this?
Actually, you all agreed to rename Elm Street of the city of Douglasville to become Page Street in honor of Ms. Martha Page, it was by request of Councilman Sam Davis, so I will turn it over to Mr. Davis.
Yes, and the family is here, and they're very excited, and I don't know if Ms. Page was able to make it, but she do have a spokesman, her niece.
Do you, do you want me to read the resolution first, or do you want to do, make, no, which name it first?
You can read the resolution when she stand up.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Madam, City Council, on behalf of our, my great Aunt Martha Page, I stand before you today, just to thank the city of Douglasville, Council, Mayor, City Council, Sam Davis, and the city for the honor of bestowing the street name in her honor. She's unable to be here, she is 102 years old, and the day of the, she was able, when they, when they came out on the day, she was up and alert and just doing everything, and then that was the weekend of our family reunion, that was on a Thursday, that Friday she was exhausted from that, and on that Saturday, she was unable to attend the reunion. Since then, she's had a, a fall, and she's unable, you know, to maneuver like she would want to, but here tonight, her daughter is here, her son, and some of our family, so I would like them to stand, and we're just here to just say thank you for the proclamation and the honor for her. And then we do have refreshments in the lobby, cake and water, just as a thank you to the city.
Oh, thank you so much. If you all want to come up to the podium, and Mayor Protem, he's going to read for the Councilmember Burdanley's Committee for Transportation, and he'll read while you're coming up, and then we'll take a picture-
Okay.
-representing the family, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Councilman Davis. This is the official City of Douglasville Resolution Number 2025-40, and it is a resolution of a change in street name, is whereas municipal corporations are empowered to designate, improve, manage, control, construct, and maintain an adequate municipal street system, and shall have control and responsibility for all construction, maintenance, or other work related to municipal street systems pursuant to OCGA Section 32-4-91, and whereas the power to name and rename streets is implied from the express power to open and close streets at, under Goodman at Al versus City of Atlanta, 246 GA 79, 1980. And whereas, Mrs. Martha Page was born in 1923 Douglasville, Georgia, where she resided and worked for her entire life, and whereas Mrs. Page has witnessed over a century of change in the city of Douglasville, from the segregated South to the transformative victories of the civil rights movement, and from dusty roads to a thriving city, and whereas Mrs. Page and a compassionate group of women gathered at Stewart Middle School to prepare and serve food for participants of the historic mule train that played a key part in Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Poor People's Campaign, and whereas, through a simple act of hospitality, Mrs. Page played a meaningful role in one of the most significant movements for human rights in American history, and whereas Mrs. Page, Mrs. Page's story continues to inspire, and her life is not only a testament to endurance, but a reminder of the quiet, powerful ways everyday people shape the world around them, and whereas, the mayor and council now desire to honor Mrs. Martha Buster Page by renaming a city street to memorialize her achievements. Now therefore resolved is hereby, now therefore it is hereby resolved by the Douglasville Mayor and members of the City Council, that the city street known as Elm Street is hereby renamed Page Street, so resolved this 21st day of July 2025.
And this is her daughter, and that's her grandson.
Oh, wow.
And these are cousins, and nieces and nephews.
Wonderful.
I mean nieces, I'm sorry, not cousins, nieces.
Okay.
I'm the youngest favorite niece, but I'm just-
I know, you're the baby. So I'll read what Dr. Burdanley had, and I'm going to tell you a story before I read this, so I saw Mother Buster Page shopping one day, she was sharp, like she always is, had heels on and everything, and so I said to her in the aisle, I said, you look nice, and she stopped, turned around, did a fashion show, dipped her hat, and said, I always do. I said, oh. So that was my introduction to her about 30 years ago, she's a one, she's a wonderful person. So this is from Dr. Burdanley, it says, congratulations to Mother Martha Page, to Mother Page, her family and friends, I would like to extend my heartfelt congratulations on this wonderful honor of having a street named after you. Due to other commitments, well, she's here, she said she wasn't going to be here, but she wanted to give her thoughts, Mother Page, you were my Sunday school teacher at Golden Memorial United Methodist Church when I was in elementary school, and an usher who made sure you didn't misbehave in church. You are still fondly remembered for wearing your stilettos and your classy hats on Sunday. Love with respect, Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Burdanley. So you know she had to step out, but this is what she wanted to present. So we're going to come around, we're signing the resolution now, so that you all can take it home if you want to, and so myself and council members will sign, and then, so while we're doing that, if you all can just come around, Ms. Emily, you, you tell them how to take the picture, I'm not going to regulate all that.
That's the official one?
Yeah, this one we're going to keep in the- All righty. That was some fun things to do, and it's a blessing for someone to, 102 years old to be praying for the Page family and look forward to erecting the sign from Elm Street to Page Street. All right, is that all you had, Vice Chair of Transportation?
Yes, ma'am. That is all we have on the table.
Thank you so much. Other business, Dr. Burdanley is not back yet, I'm not sure if we want to take up the Public Relations item. Yes, yes, ma'am, and we'll come back to it after we do the reports, an update-
Executive session, ma'am.
Okay, so we do have an executive session. All right, so updates from city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan?
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Police Department Deputy Chief JR Davison?
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, how did the event go? There was something Saturday, or is this coming Saturday?
I think it's just coming Saturday.
It's a justice, what is it coming up this Saturday?
The rally for justice.
The rally for justice, what time does it start, Deputy Chief? Is that 10?
I'll get back to you, Mayor, I don't know the exact time right now.
I think it's at 10 o'clock, and then Hollis Street event is coming up, and that's in August, the Hollis Street, it's going to be like the jumpy houses and hot dogs and hamburgers and a lot of fun on Hollis Street. Community meeting, city manager doesn't have anything. Comments from citizens and delegates, if you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us about any business, remain to the city of Douglasville, the microphone is open, you may certainly come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about anything in reference to Douglasville. Dr. Rogers? Okay. I thought you were talking, okay. All righty. So we don't have any comments from citizens and delegates, and we'll go back to other business, and in, in the, the category of other business, we did have a conversation under Public Relations at the committee level, and it was a staff report concerning the city of Douglasville's support for the Feed the Children community event, our city manager will lead us in that item, and Dr. Burdanley wanted to bring the item back up, I know we had a robust discussion, and city manager can do a synopsis, but I'll just say, generally, the thought was very supportive of the event, Feed the Children event, but the concerns were not having an opportunity to talk with you, Dr. Burdanley, about all the logistics and how the city would support- about all the logistics and how the city would support the event, not as a council member, but having it at the city, the City of Douglasville's name on the event for all logistics, as well as, as that was the concern, I believe for the most part. But the city manager can do a brief synopsis, you can do the report how you were going to do it, and then open it up. And this is a public relations committee, which is your committee, Councilman Davis. So you can lead the conversation. I don't want to take over the conversation.
I think what Councilman Davis wanted was to allow Ms. Danley to speak on behalf of, for herself, on behalf of the event.
Yes, but we make any kind of decision, I would like for her to speak on the event and know what's involved.
Yeah, and everybody raised the concerns or whatever questions they had. Thank you, Dr. Burdanley, for pressing your way.
All right, thank you so much, Councilman Davis. And I'd be very happy to speak on the comments. I just want to say to my colleague and to all of my colleagues that I am the first person that I always make contact with is our city manager, number one. The second person, regardless of what our schedules, is my colleague, Councilman Davis. So he was the first one that I emailed. We have not had any detailed conversations, but I have been communicating with him about what's going on. So he may not just felt comfortable speaking for what I have, you know, to say, because he's not me. So I want to make sure I can articulate what is appropriate. So do you have any questions for me? Let me just start from that, because I can, I don't want to go too far out. So just hit some highlights, looking at the flyer. Just when I look at, we have two schools in this district. They both are Title I. I, our coach to my left, his church delivered, what is it, weekend backpacks? Coach Watts, is that what it was?
Well, the.
Meals on Wheels?
The backpacks were done, separate organization.
Okay.
They're not affiliated with our church.
So they're not, are they faith-based?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So I didn't know they were doing that. They did it for how many years?
There's, yeah, they're still doing it.
At North Douglas.
Wow, yeah.
Like North Douglas, which is in my ward. So like if you've gone to the grocery store, a carton of eggs is almost $10. So there are so many bookbag giveaways, and I am so excited. Like our sorority AKAs will be here. I'm not going to make your announcement, I'll leave that for you all. But they do it every year, every single year. So there were school supplies given out, but the groceries is just a heartbeat. So we just start, we had a conversation with my, a brief conversation with my colleague, because I think he's supporting someone who is giving away, what is it, Councilman Davis? Tennis shoes?
Tennis shoes.
Yes, here at the park, okay? So I immediately spoke with Ms. Hampton. I made, set a date on the calendar at the park over a month ago. So and then after that, the committee design, we have been here on Wednesdays at 2:00. And Dr. Toya Green, who's a renowned dentist, is co-chair. So we talked about faith-based with the Boys and Girls Club closing. And now possibility of after-school programs in our school system may not be, funding may not be available. So I know I have grandchildren, they eat lunch at 11:30, and they get home at 5:00. Like they can eat the whole refrigerator, like kids can eat this summer. Like, thank you for going, I'm just being real. So that was the need. So I thought I had communicated, but I, it's on August 3rd, on a Sunday, from 2:00 to 8:00. Why did we select the times of 2:00 to 8:00? It's because a couple of months ago, there was an incident here at this park, and it was between the hours of 2:00 and 8:00. And so just coming over here and speaking with residents, I've seen like between, and our deputy chief making convert, there was a young person that was arrested. And we were just trying to see what can we do to help, number one, support our families and our youth, but also in this park, like during the summer, like between 3:00 and like 8:00, it was packed with a lot of middle school students and high school. So the individual that was arrested, I'm not sure what age, but like we had children giving out food in the park. Like the night we had our town hall meeting, the young man, he said that he didn't know who I was, and like he's saying, "Hey, you say get to know someone," like I challenged him, I went over there. And when I went over there, they were giving out food at the back of their truck. And kids were coming from the apartments getting food. So that touched my heart. So if the council feels like it's not appropriate, and you don't want us to do it, and it's not, if you have questions about church and state, but I just want to say, I'm not canceling the event. If I have to do it in front of my house, then that's what I'll do. So as far as the logistics, we thought about having, I reserved the, this community center and the gym. And then we thought, like that's way too much time. And I told my husband, I said, "You know what, we don't, we don't want to just, that's too, no. First of all, they have to go to school the next day." So children don't wake up at 8:00 and 10:00, they wake up like at 1:00. And parents do too. If I could sleep till 1:00, I would. If I could be asleep now, I should be at home sleeping. But we chose, so it was a lot of thought put into it. So I think it just really touched my heart when I saw children coming through the apartments getting food. That really bothered me. And you all know that some students, when they go to school, that's really like the only meal that they get. And that's just reality. I mean, I grew up in this ward, thank goodness for the community. Councilman Davis, no. Like we all went to somebody's house. Like somebody asked me the other day, "You got a cup of sugar and an egg?" Back in the day, we used to do that. And it's going to get times when we still have to do it. Thank you, Councilman Miller, for telling me, "Look, how to raise chickens. Tell my husband we might need to get two." But it's real. So I just want to say, it was time that we put into it, so it'd be like a drive-up. So we have volunteers from different organizations. And some of our judges, not just Judge Caldwell, but others, youth. Pastor Brandon from Crossroads, they're donating canned goods. So we have a specific items that are going to be in the bag. And I can go through it. One loaf of bread, a bag of beans, a bag of rice, Roman noodles, a jar of peanut butter for those that are not allergic, a gallon of apple juice. And then Chick-fil-A have given discounts, that we have individuals that are paying so that children not only get a bag of groceries, but they also get a Chick-fil-A box free. So they go home that night with a hot meal in a box, and no one's touching anything. And then all the individuals that are donating are stores and other churches and other individuals that see the need. So that is why. So it's from 2:00 to 5:00 until supplies last, and we're giving away 150 boxes. So no one will be turned away, but I think the heart is when I know what it feels like to go to bed and as a single mom, giving my children more food than what I ate. And that's the reality, and I'm just being transparent. I yield my comments and ask if you have any questions.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll just say, I know Councilman Estes. So Dr. Burdanley, I don't think anyone was concerned about the merit of the program. That was definitely heard and understood, and we agree. I think it was the logistics of the program. So for me, just like you were saying, my sorority, this coming Saturday, we have an event with haircuts, food, backpacks, all of that. Right, and we do that every year, been doing it for 25 years. But it was already, the articulation agreement with the city, so it's a city event.
Right.
And the other thing that I said on the comments about the food is that at St. James, with the capitals and queues, we do food once a quarter. I've gone with the Alphonsen, came to your house that time with turkeys.
Yes, you did.
Cabbage. We went to the apartments over here. So it was just the city being the sponsor. Because I think the initial request was for the city to be a partner and for the city to promote it. And so that was, that was the rub, is that with that, that we would have to do every nonprofit or every organization to come to the city park and use a park facilities without paying to do their own personal events. So that was the concern.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for bringing that back to my attention, because we did, you met with all the committee chairs, and we had the conversation. So I asked for logistics as far as the police department, and I was told if it is a non-city support, then the organization, I mean, it would, the police officers would have to be paid.
Right.
My question was, I am a city council member in this ward. It is hosted by Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Burdanley, the people that elected me in this ward. So I didn't see if I hosted it, and I understand the logistics. So when we, it was like, you have to pay for a police officer. Well, let's listen, you know. So I said, "Well, I tell you, we have the liaisons here. So if anything happens, then we call 911." Like, and I understand Ms. Hampton said, you know, and even Chief Sparks, like the police officer's already still strained, so we cut the time down.
Right.
So that the logistics would be, we have volunteers, people will pull up, and we are not going to use the community, this building, nor the gym, because it's not going to be jumping houses and all that. You got to get these meals, go home, and get a bath, and get in bed, and get up for school. So if they go to Jesse Dave, I mean, to Alice Hawthorne, drive up, get a bag of groceries, thank you, keep it moving, and drive right on back out. And I think probably, and as far as the volunteers being here, if, like we can, we were going to assemble bags, the Colgate, when Dr. Green said the Colgate agreed to send toothbrushes, and then they're sending them to the city, attention to Councilwoman Danley, so it'll probably arrive at any time. So I'll be glad to pick it up, and I'll have my husband to go pick them up if it doesn't need to be stored at the city. As far as food, there would not be any food stored here at all, because we don't have the space, and I didn't want staff to have to be worried about that. So that's as much information as I can give you. So as far as the city event, and Ms. Hampton reminded me, like, I know that the city, like we had to cut, we've had to cut our budget.
Right.
Like, well, we don't, and so no staff are involved at all, and we're going to be outside.
I think it might be a good idea to turn it back over to our legal counsel, because he had some comments to.
Sure, yes, go ahead.
About the concerns.
Well, Councilman Estes, you want to yield for legal before?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Dotson?
The only concern the legal department raised is the fact that if you do this for free for one group, you'll probably have to keep doing it for free for other groups. In other words, if that's the policy fine, it's going to be hard to charge one group and give another group the use free.
So can I, let me clarify something. The group that is hosting this is the group you're looking at right here. I'm Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Burdanley. So I have organizations that are supporting Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
If we, if any of us wanted to use a city facility, we'd have to pay just like a citizen.
Then you know what, then send the bill.
She said it's going to be outside.
Right, so just send the bill.
Part of that.
So we have to make a decision tonight. Like either you are going to support and allow, or I'll make the announcement tonight that the location will be moved. And that's easy, because we can just keep going round and round. I hear what, and thank you Attorney Joel. But like, the group is Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Burdanley, I'm host, I am hosting it.
Yeah.
And I have friends that are helping. So is it wrong for me to have an event? I don't.
Having the event is not the issue, it's just that the event has to be paid for.
Okay, well then, then send the.
The city has to be.
Then if the city has to be paid for, honey, go ahead and go ahead and do what we need to do. So from 2:00 to 5:00, because I don't understand why the councilwoman has to pay.
It's the same reason, I submit plans for a building that I'm having, I don't get, I don't get a free review. I have to pay, pay for that service just exactly like everybody else does.
Okay, so what you're saying is that Councilwoman Danley cannot be on the grounds, and because I'm a councilwoman, I need to pay for the facility in the ward where I serve? That's what I'm asking.
I guess it's a private event, it's not the city's event.
Why is it private? I'm not private.
Oh, I don't know, I'm just saying.
And then if it's not, then if it becomes a city event, then you're getting a whole different issue.
Okay, what makes it a city event? I guess it, because we're using the facility, is that the one change?
Well, I think that if I'm hearing what you all are saying, what Councilman Burdanley is asking, and I think this is legal clarification, is by virtue of her being an elected official, does that mean her creating or suggesting an activity, it automatically becomes a city event? And for what I, and Joel is shaking his head, no. In order for something to become a city event, the body would have to make that decision.
So let me just restructure this. You know, for years, our mayor has done a super job going to read to our children. How is that different? But you're going to other schools, so you're just taking your body there. So what if you wanted to, on a Saturday, come here and read to children on a day that you decided to do it?
Guess what, Dr. Burdanley, that's exactly what somebody wants to do.
See?
So, okay, but listen, so I read through the school system with the superintendent's principal for the day, I go to the library at Selman. So I've read to like 33 schools under the school system auspice. Or the mayor's programs with GMA, they send the books, I go there. But someone wanted to do a mayor's literacy program. We talked to the city manager, they wanted to use the Town Green.
They or you wanted to do it?
No, they were doing it for me, because that would be part of my legacy, is literacy. And they have T-shirts, read with the mayor, all of that. We have to pay for everything. We have to pay for the Town Green, we have to pay for the books, we got to pay for the people that, with the lights, with the everything, because it would be Mayor Robinson's reading program. But if it's this, I'm not, when I go to, I'm the mayor going to Chapel Hill Elementary, but it's under the school system, and they have several readers, I'm just one of the readers. So if it's my personal thing, I have to pay for it.
It's not personal.
I mean, it's my legacy of reading, and I'm still going to do it, but I have to, I have to pay for the books. I can't use the City of Douglasville for anything. So I would have to get sponsors from Georgia Power, all of that, to purchase the books and to pay for the Town Green. I read last week at the Town Green, there was 40 kids, I was in the newspaper, but it was the school system.
So, so, okay, so I think we need to just look at the law, and we need to make a decision. So, Madam Mayor, if, because the library closed.
Right.
There's no library over here. What if, what if children said, "Madam Mayor, will you come to the park and read us some books for like a couple of weeks?" What are you going to do?
I'm going to read the books, but I'm not going to put it on the, on the city's flyer and tell the city to promote it for me. I'm just going to come out here and read some books, like we did, I have the little libraries, which one is here at this park?
So let me clarify. Our city, my city, the city manager and I had a very in-depth conversation about that. And what she said to me is that the body, like if you had the logo with the mayor and everybody, that would be a city event.
Right.
If you look at that, it has the seal, so the seal can come off. And I'm just trying to, I'm trying to just say, we need to make a decision. So if the council, if there's too many questions and too much confusion, then, but if we can't say yea or nay, because August 3rd, in my book, is tomorrow. Like we have people have already began to write checks.
So why can't it be done at Golden, just stay, just keep it at the church?
Well, you know what, I'm sure Pastor King, if they have that date. But like I said before, if we can't do it at the church, if we cannot do it right here, then I will do it in front of my front yard.
Right.
And we will give out groceries bags. So I know you're in support.
Yes, ma'am.
Joel, I understand, but as a councilwoman who's elected in this ward, I pay taxes in this, in this, in this city. And I don't want to have to go there, I'm going to stop my comments. So I'm going to just say, let's just make a decision.
But it's not, it's not a hard yes or no. I think it's, it's difficult, because it's like Mayor Pro Tem is saying. He's a, he's a Mayor Pro Tem, he's an elected official in Arbor Station, but he still has a business, and because, just because he's an elected official doesn't waive him having to pay for services.
So I want to say, you know, it's very little, as I've been on council for 18 years. And I'm not trying to say anything about any one of you. But as the City of Douglasville, I haven't seen too many council members in my whole life who have done things and just sponsored. I haven't seen it. Now Chief Sparks does it, he does a great job, but it's with city, and I get it. But I, in my time, even when I was a little, when I was a little girl, council members did that. So if, if, we just need to, so if it's something I don't understand, then let's make a decision. If it's not going to be here, then let's move on.
And maybe we can do something for a one-time event for the third, and we write it up and we do a waiver.
Yes.
Or something like that, that can work, because even a council member or District 1 Commissioner Mitchell left, but he and I used to have the back-to-school festival here at the park.
And you all didn't pay for the fees, you didn't pay for the service.
It was a city event, with city ward funds. It was a city event, with city board funds.
So listen, I'm a city councilmember, and this is my ward, so if it cannot be at this city building where I serve, then I, then we just don't do it. It's just that simple. And I'm, if you, because I don't want anybody saying, if you got to do it for one, if you do it for another, I'm the, there's no other Councilwoman, Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Right. So is there any kind of way we can, the council would feel comfortable having a, a document with a waiver for this to be a one-time event?
Yeah, and it has nothing to do with a legacy, because I give out food all the time, so it's not leaving a legacy.
Or for legal, is that anything we can do, or is that illegal or whatever?
But if it has to be paid for, then-
You can do that, and I hate asking a question I don't know the answer to. Do we have a policy concerning the use of the park for anything? In other words, in other words, what is our policy set?
We, we do, and Mr. Bass is here, he can come up to speak to it. I mean, if you all want to support the event, I mean, that was the ask, then it needs to just become a city event that you all support, and then what can happen from that standpoint? Mr. Bass?
Yeah.
Rally up and, and do what we need to do, like we logistically do all events, that's the simplest thing to do.
Yeah, so I don't want to pay staff, oh, and have staff come here, we talked about that. But before Mr. Bass, I want to ask my colleague, Councilman Davis, how do you feel?
I feel that you're moving in the right direction, and we, we can, uh, get it done this time, because it's already been put out there, and about like the be-he thing with the Juneteenth, and get it done.
Be-he paid, though.
Be-he paid.
Yeah.
So I'm just asking, do you, okay, so you're saying, do it, yes, you support it, or let's hold off?
No, we're trying to see how we can support.
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Bass, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. So to Mr. Dawson's question, we do have a policy that says if you are providing a service for at least five hundred residents, then you can receive a discount or comp rate. We passed that ordinance about three years ago, just to clean up our process with nonprofits, because we did get a lot of requests, so that is the policy that's been approved.
Okay.
It's, it's a discounted rate, it's not at no cost, we used to have those things, but we cleaned that up to be able to say you're providing a service. This is a smaller event, again, the, the simplest thing to do is if you all wanted to support this event, that we, if you want to support the event, say that we're going to support the event, that will allow Mr. Bass to have his staff work the event, as well as for the police department to manage the logistics around what needs to happen with traffic control.
Councilmember Burdanley, Councilwoman Burdanley, I, I think, I think the event will happen, I think it should happen, but I'm just wondering if it wouldn't just be easier to have it at Golden, or another church here in the, in the community, it'll be just as effective.
Let me ask our deputy chief, as it relates to the police department, your comments in regards to logistics, like that six-lane highway right there, y'all come around here like after school and see some of the kids crossing the street, we don't have logistics for that, go ahead.
So the logistics would be for traffic.
Okay.
And so it's how fast, how frequent people are coming through, and does it cause a problem out backing out into the road?
Okay, that's the only comment?
That's the only comment.
Then I would suggest work up the logistics and, and send the bill. Send the bill.
I guess it still comes back to the question, and then to legal, if, again, I'm with my colleagues, this is an incredibly noble cause, there's, I don't think any, anybody up here has anything against do, seeing this happen, but do we set a precedent, if we endorse this, that we will be putting our, putting ourselves in a straitjacket, that we have to endorse every event that comes along after this?
As I understood it, we have a policy, is that correct? That's why Mr. Bass said.
We, we do have a-
And the policy, this policy doesn't involve city events.
Correct.
This is just an event sponsored by-
And then period.
Councilmember Danley. So if, if, if that's within that policy, I have no idea what the fee is, but I see no problem. If she's treated like the other, every other group that wants to do that.
But they'd have to pay the fee.
Whatever the, I don't know what the fee is, but yes, I'm saying-
Are you prepared to pay for the fee?
I guess I'm confused, like, how do you all define Councilwoman Danley? Like, this is an idea that I thought about, because I saw children hungry. Now, as far as the logistics, I, I'm, I'm just saying, how do you see me? Do you see me as an organization?
No, ma'am, you're just an elected official.
Right, so is it because I have had other individuals donate, and it's no cost to the city? Like, you're not paying, I didn't ever ask the city to, to do anything, so I'm just, I'm confused.
I, I think what it is, I think what it is, Councilwoman Burdanley, I think what's not being said is that not one individual elected official has the ability, nor the right, to create an event, an expense, any procedure on their own, without permission of the body.
Okay, so on Wednesdays, when I, my health is good, I have been coming up here and sitting and talking, and I, and when, and when it was booked a month ago, a month And now it is July twenty-first, which that's what we decided, two weeks, school starts. Now, between then and now, and she's right, she did put it on the agenda, but even if it was on here on the twenty-first, we're still in the crunch.
When you booked it, you say you booked it a month ago?
Yes, sir. And if, and the fees, if you're saying, well, go ahead, did she put her foot in her mouth? Yes, I did, because I don't have anything, I'm being totally transparent. It's not a legacy, this is a one-time, just give away food. You take my name, then take my name off of it. Just take my name off of it, and, and just let me give out grocery bags, just, and don't include the city. I'm just saying, because I, I understand logistics, but if you, like, the hours, and you got to get staff working it, and I get it, but like at five o'clock, or between two o'clock and eight o'clock, come and see the logistics that happened at this park. It was packed, you have thirty children walking up, but the day that it, there was an instant, an incident happened, where were the logistics? So I'm just saying, like, I hear you're getting frustrated, and so am I. So I'm just saying, if it's not going to happen here, because the cost would be so astronomical just to give out food, it costs more to pay for the facility and to give out a gro, bag of groceries. So I will ask Pastor King, whether we have it in a building or not, the grocery bags will be given out.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you, you are the chair of public, say, of the parks, so if you're saying you, you feel better, if that was at Golden, then I rest my case. Let it be at Golden, and I'll ask Pastor King, and if they don't have the time, if they don't have the space, I don't want staff here working overtime and doing all that. Our police department still don't make that much money to have that many comps here, so they don't make sense. So, so that, so we will have it at Golden, but we will give away the grocery bags.
And I want to clear this up for everybody, it's not a matter of an absorbent amount of staff, that's not what we're talking about, because I would think that what the deputy chief is mentioning is just coming up with a plan. So whether it's a city-sponsored event, or whether it's a private event, we would have to do the same thing.
Right.
It wouldn't change.
Right, so I don't understand why it's, when you're saying a city event, I am city, I am a city. So, so, I, so I'm, I'm just going to say, I rest it-
Councilwoman Danley.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem, let me rest it, let, I've, I've listened to the chair, he is public, he is over this park, he said he feels comfortable if it was at Golden. So to keep the children safe and not just have to keep going over groceries, then let, then it's, that's then, I rest my case.
Well, Dr. Burdanley, I'll ask if you please let other councilmembers who haven't had an opportunity to say anything-
Madam Mayor, you all can discuss, I'm excusing myself, because we'll be here all night like y'all were last Thursday, and I cannot. So please discuss, you can spend a minute, but I'm making the decision to have it away from this park.
Anyone else have anything else to say?
I mean, I, I actually did-
Yes, sir, Councilmember Miller.
Hand raised for quite a while, I just seem to keep getting overlooked lately. As I stated earlier, I think that this is an incredible idea, and I, and I love it, and I love what Dr. Burdanley is trying to do, and I think it's, I, I think it needs to be done, but as, as it's been brought up, I am concerned that what happens when the next group comes and wants to host a event or a charity event, where do we draw the line? As Councilwoman Hudson and myself wanted to host an event in downtown Douglasville, and we were told no, and you know what, we said, yes, ma'am.
Just like I said with the books, the person, they wanted to, they have the T-shirts, everything, I said, well, it can't be my personal, if that's what I want to do, if I'm going to use the town green, I, Rochelle Robinson, even though I'm the mayor, and still have two years left on being the mayor, would have to pay for the town green, because it's not a city event.
Correct.
It's my event.
I think that there's some confusion, though, because I, I know, at a county level, they have, their budget is worked out differently, so that the, the commissioners have a budget through the county to do certain types of events like that. We don't do that, our budget is very much smaller than the county's budget, we, we just don't have the budget to do those sorts of events. Now, I'm curious, do we have any idea what it would cost to rent this facility as a, as a charity?
Yeah, Mr. Bass can come up, he'll give you the amount. One thing I just, you know, want to be clear from staff's perspective, when any of you all come, and I'll use you, Councilwoman Miller, that you mentioned about the event that you all want to do, it's never a matter of we want to tell you all no, it's a matter of, again, one individual elected official can't make a decision and create a function that's going to cost the city money, create, work for staff on their own. So we're going to always say, have you talked to your colleagues, and we're going to bring it before the council, we will always do that, unless it's something that's just a part of the normal course of business of the things that we do, but if it is something brand-new that you all want to do, we're going to always refer back to you all to make that decision, to tell us. That then in turn makes the, that then in turn lets us know what logistics we need to put together, and then what funding sources we need to put behind it. But we just don't arbitrarily just create events without the collective making the decision on it, we just don't. Mr. Bass, that cost?
Yes, ma'am. So for the community center, which is the building we're in now, there is a resident and non-resident rate. So for the resident rate, that's one hundred and fourteen dollars an hour, and the resident, the non-resident rate is a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, with a minimum of four hours. For the pavilions outside, you have, for residents, forty-five dollars an hour, and fifty-five dollars for non-residents. For the senior center, if someone did want to rent one of those spaces, it's thirty dollars an hour, only twenty-five people, thirty, and thirty-six for non-residents. And then the gymnasium is a hundred and forty dollars an hour for residents, and one seventy an hour for non-residents, and that's based on the halves, and again, that's a minimum of four-hour rental. And then you have certain cleaning, cleaning and damage deposits for each particular facility.
Mr. Bass, can you also address if someone wants to just come and set up and not be attached to any of the facilities, how we handle that?
Yeah, so we, we have this a lot, where people will come set up in the parks, we typically will have staff reach out to them if we know it ahead of time, but if we see them on-site, then we will have to send them to the right logistics in terms of the right staff members to plan something out. We get people wanting to do exercise bootcamps in the park a lot. That sometimes can be challenging, because people see open pavilions or open space, and they assume that there's nothing going on, and then someone has reserved it, so we will refer them to our reservation staff members to find some type of opportunity for them through the rental process, but we do get people to pop up all the time.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I think that Councilwoman Burdanley acknowledged that to have it at Golden. I, I think, I hate, I don't want to take anything away from this event.
Right.
And I, I, I feel like this back and forth tonight has done that, but it is what it is, but it's going to be a worthy event, and it'll be just as successful at Golden as it would be here. And we've heard all the reasons why, and sending the bill is not, not the answer.
Yeah, we're not going to send a bill.
The answer is one of the local churches allowing it to take place there.
Yeah, just don't want it to seem heartless, like, you know, I want to feed the children in the City of Douglasville, just trying to be fair across the board.
We're going to, we're, the event, I'm sure is going to take place, and, and I think, I commend Councilwoman Burdanley, I just hate that it's gotten to this point.
Understood, happy a conversation, we just, it just is what it is. Any other comments, City Manager?
Yes, ma'am, you all didn't take action on your transportation committee item.
We didn't.
You did not?
We didn't vote for Mother Page. We were excited about taking a picture.
Tell her to come back, we, we told her to come back, we have to-
No!
Okay, Vice Chair, Vice Chair, go ahead and make your motion.
All right. We got to go find the, thank you.
Twenty-five dash two seventy-nine.
Thank you for the protocol, appreciate. All right, Madam Mayor, I would like to place item twenty-five dash two seven-nine in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, I have a motion to approve, may I have a second, please? Councilman Davis?
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved to second, moved by Vice Chair Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller, second by Councilmember Samuel Davis. To approve item twenty-five dash two seventy-nine, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item? Not seeing any, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty-five dash two seventy-nine is, is approved. Thank you, City Manager, for letting us come back to take care of that item properly. Okay, so now we are at comments from citizens and delegates, if we don't have any other business to discuss, I know we brought that up under other business, we did have our updates from city staff, if you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business. Jermaine, to the City of Douglasville. Dr. Rogers.
My name is Dr. John Rogers, sixty-three thirty, Holborn Lane, Douglasville, Georgia, three oh one three four.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council. Back to the twenty-five two thirty-five, it was tabled for August thirteenth and August fifteenth?
Fourteenth and eighteenth.
Fourteenth and eighteenth, and the vote on that would be, do you vote on the fourteenth for that?
The fourteenth and eighteenth, yes, sir.
Vote takes place on the eighteenth.
We voted, the vote is the eighteenth, so-
Right, I said in September fourteenth, and the vote's the eighteenth for-
August.
August.
August fourteenth.
And that's a, maybe I'm confused a little bit, but the first one was twenty-five two seventeen, and I thought that you guys tabled it until the fourteenth and eighteenth of September due to, it's August?
It's August, yes, sir, because the, the next meeting would be July thirty-first, and that was the first, the chair's recommendation is to have it next week, but our staff attorney has informed us, so we have to have our fifteen days or ten days to advertise, so we would have to put it in the paper, advertise, and do all of that, so we had to push it to the next meeting, which would be August the fourteenth, this, the work session, and then voting on that Monday, August the eighteenth.
Yes, ma'am. The third question that I had was, is there a limitation on tabling?
You can table twice.
You can table twice.
Yes, sir, and this will be the second time to table.
Yes, ma'am, so there will be a vote on the eighteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, y'all have a blessed day, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Okay, not seeing any others. I do see that we have an executive session, so not having any other business, I open the floor for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss potential person, or to discuss a personnel matter.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Ness, to have a motion to go into executive session, may I have a second, please?